Thanks for coming, everyone. I know just about everybody here, I'll leave by sight. But if you don't know me, I'm Scott Swanson. I'm the editor and publisher of The New Era. This year, we decided, especially with a great group of candidates for city council, to do a little bit more to try to encourage communication between the public and candidates before the election, instead of after the election, which has tended to be the case in the ten years that I've been here. Can you believe that?
No.
Shocking.
And I'm proud of you.
Thanks. It's our privilege tonight to have a number of candidates here. We have two that, one that is supposed to be here, and she has come from Eugene, Anais, so I think she'll probably eventually make it, I hope she does. And then, two others, Ryan and Greg, were unable to make it for various reasons. So unfortunately, they can't be here. But we do have Erin, and Bruce, and Jeff, and James. So we appreciate you guys making it here, being willing to come and answer all the questions. And we also have, as our moderator, Craig Fennemeyer. And I think all of you know who Craig is, but if you aren't that familiar with him, he's been the mayor of Sweet Home for fourteen years, or he's served as mayor for fourteen years. He just, this year, returned to just general councilmanship. He's been involved in a lot of different things, the council governments, various commissions. He's served on the Sweet Home Active finalization efforts, which is better known as Share. So he's been very involved in a lot of different areas over the years. Craig's a graduate of Oregon State in Forest Management, but he's been an insurance agent here in town for many, many years. I think nineteen eighty-one was when he was there. So, he is actually one of the reasons why some of these people are running, because he's not going to run again. So we thought that'd make him a very good prospect for a moderator, since he's got a lot of knowledge about the city, knows what questions to ask, and he knows where these guys are, all the, especially the ones who have been before, and knows exactly what awaits them should they be elected. So, anyway, Craig, why don't you take it?
Okay, alright. I'm actually gonna stand up to the chairs really far. Anyway, thank you for coming, everybody, I appreciate it. It was kinda nice to be up on this end and feel kind of a little bit more relaxed. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead with self-introductions. I'm Jake, I'm time, candidates, I'm a few years old, I'm a senior.
My name is Erin Byer. I'm a resident of the city council. A few people say it's true, so whether or not people make changes, because some people scream they should, and other people say let's make a change. I have a master's degree in criminal justice and current law program for management organizational leadership. I have a commentary, I sleep at work sometimes, police department area.
Bruce Hoff, currently one of the councillors for the state of Sweet Home. Pretty much one entirely, and it's been, I'm currently hanging up certain cases, I can't handle, and then the rest of my, I can't answer.
Yeah. I was born in the Bay, I'm kind of right there. Attended Jamaica Community College, and then I went down to the state university, and I graduated history, and my wife. And after we had our first child, I managed a apartment complex actually for a while, we had our first child, we decided, you know, let's go on, further education a little bit, so decided to go to William University, and got a JD and BA, so a law degree and a management degree. And, you know, I really wanted to live in a small town, you know, that wasn't according to me, I was born and grew up in the Montana Valley, but when I was looking for work, I was looking for someplace, kind of a small town environment where everybody knows everybody, where you have the opportunities that we have here. I love fishing, I love hunting, I love the law because it means being home, and the nature of my law practice allows me to do things like be involved in the city council, or if I was, you know, attorney in Portland, that's not a possibility. You know, here, I'm one of your firefighters, I'm a board director for the local soccer organization, and I can, you know, can have the opportunity to kind of serve my community and be involved in more things than just the back.
Hello, I'm James Gold. I have lived in Sweet Home for thirty-two, thirty-three years. I am production manager at High School Technologies, which is the best fantastic company here in Sweet Home. And I'm on the Sweet Home thing.
Okay, alright, I probably should move a little bit to the format. What we're gonna do is I have a question there. Five questions, right, those fairly reasonable, so we have time to open up. And I will make the questions. And the question would be, are you running for city council? And what was such a part, what's such a part as a candidate for running for mayor of the city?
My long-term goal is to win the seat on the city council. What I was appointed to, Sweet Home planning committee, it was to help make a positive change and then take this knowledge and change with me when I get the seat on the city council. What sets me apart as a candidate? For the last year and a half, I have been attending the city council meetings as a citizen for multiple reasons. The top two would be, I wanted to see which direction our city government was going to lead our community, and the other was to take the knowledge that I've learned through these meetings and share with our community and get community feedback. Throughout that, I feel that I've shown I could really, against a volatile conflict between city government and our community. Maybe that's what sets me apart as a candidate.
Question to Erin. Do you want to read the question again?
Sure.
Okay, which, why are you running for city council? And what sets you apart as a candidate?
Well, I'm running for city council because I've, over the years, followed a little bit, so some interesting questions arise to the council, very interesting decisions made by people, that I might like to be part of the decision-making process, good or bad. And I was in college, I was in the association, and there was three of us, figured it can't be any worse than seven. Might just be easier. I've been in the community ten years, I like many aspects of it, some aspects of it have been there for the last few years, and hoping to see if we can see a turn.
Bruce?
I'm re-running. I enjoyed my chance to be a councillor, because I've been doing this for a while. As an ongoing part of it, I like, the reason, biggest reason I went beyond was the great kind of made the repair here. And frequently, when I first was looking at the council, when I first ran, we had some people who were incredibly conservative on one side, and we had some folks on the other side, who were all over the board upon their decisions. I'm afraid I'm very boring, I'm very predictable, and weigh all vote on things. So.
Well, I'm running for city council, I think what we do is important. I think we have the ability to affect this community. You know, there are kids in school today, decisions we make about law enforcement will affect the community, they're working. Decisions we make about whether or not, we need more sidewalks, or safer sidewalks, it affects these kids. I think what we do is very important, and so, I think it's important for us as citizens to be involved, we can be involved. And, you know, why, why do you think it sets me apart as a candidate? I think it's my education. I wouldn't want a city council that had seven people that have gone on to doctor degrees and have all kinds of education, but I think the value to have that voice on the council. I've taken advanced course, incorporated Mr. Keanu Manans, I've taken, I've taken the class Advanced Management of Government, you know, which is all about management and government issues at work. I've taken law classes, you know, so I think that's, I think that's a skill set that I can bring to the city council, to have as part of the debate, you know, to kind of, you know, add what knowledge I can, and, you know, I'm excited about a lot of places where I'm in the city council, it'd be a lot of really good people.
Okay, next one. Where do you see Sweet Home in ten years? In other words, what is your vision for Sweet Home? Bruce?
This one is, I'm excited about this right now. It's just, I want to see us go through some decent values. Great, I need to say it, we already have a lot of great, but we have a lot of things aligned with us, we have a different kind of forest, we have a lot of projects going on, we have a great opportunity with the, used to be an old quarry property down below, you know. I really think we're moving more towards a return to vacation, and I really think we'll get there. We have a lot of people who are very interested and active in trying to make more of our outdoor space as usable and accessible to more and more people. And as that happens, I think they give great work for people, which will help our economy and the town. Great offers and natural growth in business. So, I think we'll be quite a great, good person to have as opposed to a pastor.
Well, I think, you know, I've been in Sweet Home for ten years, I think, I want Sweet Home to be a place that people want to visit, a place that people want to live. And we've got so much going for us, you know, we've got the lakes here, we've got the mountains, we've got, they talk about the forest, or, you know, people should want to come here just to spend their weekends, to spend their holidays, to visit our events, whether it's Sweet Home or other events, to shop in our stores. That's, that's a big thing for our community, is that we have an offer that, you know, maybe other towns don't have an offer, but I also want to be a place that people want to live. You know, the housing stock is rather poor, can we build nicer housing? Can we, you know, can we make the community more livable? Can we make sure that there are nice places people shop and to eat in there? You know, can we improve our schools? Anything we can do to make it a place that people want to live, that they're, that they're happy about, that they're proud of where they live? I think that's, that's my vision for the year.
Erin?
Seeing what I've seen in ten years, which has been, you know, actually productive, based on the last few years, if I were to say that that's our future, it scares me to see that you can't hardly go in and block, sleep block on me, or long without seeing a brand-new business, a shallow business, a pre-made business. And actually, along with that, I moved here, I think, ten years ago, with meeting one or two homeless people that I would find them. Today, I have sixty or seventy names of homeless people that there's really nothing for them here, and they're living off of us as much as they're trying to live amongst us, and it kind of seems odd that we just can't seem to be able to improve them, or improve us, or have them maybe relocate, instead of us relocating. This town, we're great at selling it, and that's it, we're simply a little change.
My vision for Sweet Home, ten years out, is one where we have, I'd say, found a way to capitalize on our recreational potentials that we have here, knocking at our back doors everywhere. Also, part of my vision would be where we found a way to maintain a balance between our community livability and our economic growth. There's many ways we can go about that, but we have to take the first step to get there.
Erin, what do you think Sweet Home is, or is it challenging, or are you?
Trying to make a business, I know that it can either provide jobs for a reason for mom-and-pop businesses to conduct businesses now. Some years ago, I had a couple of looks, and I had a hard time tracking down small mom-and-pop businesses as they were all closed during the last two years. Yet I know there's potential, Harvest Festival Saturday, just a bad before you, vendors, and some of these people are running little shops, we have plenty of vacant businesses here. It'd be nice to have a way to make an income based off one's skills and abilities, as opposed to hoping a large corporation comes in and offers a few people a job.
What do you think, what do you think is one of our biggest challenges?
Economic growth. I think one of our biggest challenges in our community has been economic growth over the last fifteen, twenty years. We have a wide recreational resource. We have hiking, fishing, camping, just a whole beautiful community, all that with a small-town feel. With this small community that we have, we have limited access to I-5 and a wide mountain range at our back doors, which potentially keeps us looking as a non-viable resource for potential new business.
Okay. So, you guys, this is what Sweet Home creates for, um, unemployment rates. I think people need jobs, I think that, um, there's a sort of apathy, but I think that, you know, there's also a lack of opportunity. And I think the drugs issue is something we've got to deal with, I think we have more than our share of drug problems in this area. I'm not sure what the solution is there, but I think some of it is working. I think that's something we need to involve all the partners in the community, you know, the city council, at least the schools, you know, how do we, how do we deal with this issue? It's a problem that's had throughout this community for a while. We have a lot of people, we, it's only been a pretty long stretch of a run time, and kind of starting to give up. It's hard to maintain a high level of energy that goes team when things go sideways always. We have, we know we have people here to help move us along to bigger, better things, but I think they've gotten high. I think part of it, we reiterate, I think, that all the things that people brought up are incredibly viable, and they're all things that we need to solve. And I think, once again, we're on the beginning of an upsight, and I think as soon as anybody starts seeing it, they'll fire up, and that will help us move forward, solving a lot of problems, which is, we have a problem with this, and the lack of problems.
Alright, now, specifics. What specifically do you intend to do with the council?
At this point, I'm not really sure, I'm trying to do some investigation, I'm not sure how a city can promote an economic growth within a state or county that has a set of rules unless the city can just turn its back on the county or state rules. I really don't know, other than perhaps, I've been daily volunteer for the past six years, I can say, hey, let's all just start volunteer cores, and start rebuilding some of the more broken-down aspects of our community, but that only goes so far so fast, and people get burned out, and they don't have the necessary results. The Main Street beautification, I believe, used to have three times as many volunteers, and lots come along the way, and now, maybe you guys have enough, I don't know, but sometimes people should stop and help. If there's no money, you really can't do anything, and yet, throwing money at something doesn't always fix a problem, so at this point, I don't really have the right answer for that.
As far as the employment, I would like to see more aggressive opportunities and training for, for particularly high-school-aged children, I, you know, there are programs that exist, but I would like to see more opportunities to build jobs, you know, the city needs to get it in support, hire, you know, hire them, and some, you know, get them used to the idea of working and the benefits that come from that. You know, it's one thing to have a big souped-up truck with a big loud speaker, but it's something else when you buy yourself, you know, and, and, you know, if they can learn that, you know, what if I work hard, there are going to be benefits for me, you know, that's what we want to teach, you know, so, so that, as far as employment goes, opportunities, you know, bring the businesses in. I mean, could you imagine if Toyota opened a factory, just even in this area, which we take as we speak, home level, you know, manufacturing new hybrid CMT, I mean, you know, the things that that would do for our community, trying to figure out ways to attract that, you know, specifically how you do it, that, that's a challenge. But, but you, but, you know, it certainly doesn't happen if you don't say, hey, look at us, we've got lots of, lots of available land, lots of resources, lots of labor, why not put your factory here? Because they're in need of, you know. But as far as the drugs, I think, you know, the city council is not the all-powerful organization, and we're, we're one part of the solution, I think we need to get them to schools, you know, kids are doing drugs because they don't have any other hope, you know, and, and let's give them all the music programs, let's increase our, our participation in sports, we've got great sports programs, you know, and you see the headlines, but, you know, how many of these students take a hand? Let's increase participation, let's, let's do music, let's do sports, let's, let's get the kids doing things that, so they're not having nothing else to do, you know. What I've seen in my, in my generation growing up in college, I've seen a lot of kids that don't seem to think there's any other way to have fun, but then they get really drunk. And that's really sad. You know, if getting drunk or getting high is your idea of fun, you're missing out on so much more. And that, that's what I'd like to see, you know, how, how do we give them those opportunities to do other things, you know? Jet skiing is fun, you know, there's so much to do, it is fun, let's get them doing those things.
The things I would really like to do, and I hope that happens, is to reengage some of our city partners, give them a third-hand post, like, Sweet Home, I don't know, people like to scare them back, someone like Brian.
Who was a, was very good at working with incoming businesses, helping recruit businesses, and come up with plans and ways to leverage other monies inside the city to help create businesses. I know that some of our partners will, because of the downturn, have had a hard time with that, but I think those things will come around, we need to re-inspire some, re-appreciate some of those programs, including Business Incubator, which we do have, one that the city council may be able to utilize better, or to even work with some of our private corporations in town, have some of the longstanding faith to build, I think the first step that is to get somebody back up.
Three minutes, does remember that Bruce Hoff, your friend, with Brian Hoffmann, with that, or if.
Well, I chose economic growth. We do have a lot of recreational, recreational, excuse me, resources that we capitalize on and we can use, you know, we do have tambourine and other things that we have. I feel we capitalize on our recreational growth and help bring people to our town, and not through our town, how, how come to our community, stop, look at our shops, not just get gas and go to Sisters on there to see the western theme town, we want them to stop in here. And we need to find a way to invite potential businesses to our community, show them that we do have the hard-working, local employees here in our community, we have truck drivers, we have access to the railways and a workable city government. These are some, some ways that I can see moving forward, developing chains of economic growth.
Alright, and last, if you could, you know, two questions. If you could highlight one goal that you might fulfill during your term as a city council, what would it be in mind?
Personally, I'm in that position. It takes somebody, we have lots of good things that can happen, but it helps to have a person in place who's that way of contacting you and saying, hey, this guy's got a speaker in every pot, he knows who's doing what over here, and he can put the people together that need to be together, to facilitate things to happen. Very few good things that go on happen in the vacuum. Somebody has an idea, but they're not quite sure how to do it, somebody over here maybe has that solution, so having that millman, I think, would be a very good start for us.
Erin?
The way I'm going to present, I already said, just try to do some of the, like, revitalize the ancient buildings, put something in there that might have been a for-sale sign, a place where it had broken down. Still not good under current governance.
My goal would be to help revitalize the downtown core, make our downtown core look as beautiful as our center section of Reston County, and finding ways to entice people to come to our town, visit our town, instead of driving around our, our community, is, is, is a goal for me. Finding ways to make them stop and see what we have to offer, and see that we are a great community, spend time in our local shops before moving on. I want to help revitalize all the public, you know, town core, so we still remain a beautiful community, whether that means finding ways to revamp the front of the buildings, give the ones that are empty, make them look better. Something so, you know, when I'm at a sporting event with my children, and somebody says, oh, you live in Sweet Home? I say, yes, I do, and they say, well, we heard you have this, we heard you have a beautiful community, and I can say, yes, we do, come visit for a friend. I need that? Well, yes, I need that, but I would like to make that one of my top priorities for a goal, is to help revitalize our downtown core.
Okay. Well, goals, you know, as I say, goals should be specific, they should be measurable, they should be tangible, okay? Make some better goals, I've been a great couple of years. I mean, with a specific goal that may not be measurable or tangible. When I first came to Sweet Home to interview for the job, alright, I wanted to take my wife down here, my kids down here, show the community, say, you know, look, this is the place, you know, we went to Sankey Park, it's a beautiful park, alright, wonderful playground for little children, alright, just during the school day in the spring, and, you know, they're high school kids from the park, and I asked these kids, I say, why aren't you at school? Why aren't you at school? And they said, well, what's the point? And, you know, my, my goal for Sweet Home is, is to give them a future, to give them something to hope for. You know, measurable, how, how do we measure if, if five years from now, ten years from now, there's more hope in our community, that the kids have, you know, a greater belief in their future? You know, is there ever a point where we stop wanting to be back? But, but I, I have to be honest, that's my most important goal, because I don't like it when they're in high school to be like, what's the point? You know, like, you know, I'm not going anywhere, I'm not doing anything. You know, like, you know, I'm not going anywhere, I'm not doing anything, you know? What, those kids could be doctors, they could be lawyers, they could be soldiers, they could be firefighters, they could be anything they want to be, and they don't believe in their own future. So, how, how do we give our community a hope for a future? That, that's my goal.
Okay, to this point, um, I have some questions, some questions from your audience.
Well, I'll break the ice. I'll break the ice. So, when you take the oath of office, you're bound to uphold laws of the constitution, correct? The federal laws, the state laws, the county laws, and the city ordinances, right? So, in, in your opinion, did the council make the right decision by letting me open a, a marijuana dispensary down here against the federal law? And that's how I think service.
Want to ask each councilperson?
Yeah, I'd like to have an answer from all of you.
Okay.
Wow. That's a very tough question.
Depends.
Personally, I did not agree with the council's vote to allow the facility to go in. I'm neither opposed or pro for this medicine. I think we should have put the moratorium in effect for a while so we could work out issues and better guidelines for our community. Being on the planning committee, I had some issues with location, um, for these facilities to go in next to a presidential area and the area there. So, I would have to say, no, I don't approve of the position of the council.
So, as everybody knows, I was one of the people who voted to not approve of it. Um, as to the constitution, whether it's constitution or not, um, that breaks down to a couple of interesting problems. While the constitution does come into play, it does not, depending on who looks at it, may or may not include whether or not the marijuana should have ever been pretty good in the first place. As to the people of the state who once voted to allow these things to go in, the state legislator gave us, gave us the opportunity to put into a moratorium. My wording was that they would push it out as long as they could until it expired, as opposed to attacking an issue quickly inside, uh, zoning or where people would advocate for that. At the time, one of the things we was hoping for was to give specific guidance to allow zoning to be put in place in a quick and timely manner. Uh, that wording was not put into the resolution at the time. So, I was not comfortable putting in a moratorium, uh, with knowing that it would be drug out as opposed to attacking a new ingredient that we know is going to come. The state legislature had to do this. We did not allow that, we did not break them, we did not say, you know, those rules have been unfortunately above our legal. Um, it was just us, we were going to kick it down the road, open it up to see what happens, or try to come up with a plan. And I feel that at the time, people would rather just kick it down the road, so it wasn't their problem. And I would like to have seen a more specific kind of thing. So, I was, am not entirely happy with it, but it is, I think was the right decision.
Well, I was in a council meeting where you were saying to not stall like three years, you know, that's city council community. I was under the impression that there would be restrictions, which included not on Main Street, which is, you know, within 300 feet of residency, which there's a house with small children, right, sharing the backyard of it. That point disappoints me, but, uh, I couldn't find where Sweet Home was obligated to even have a dispensary. Anyone I know with an O M and P card, they most of them already have their own sources. One lady mentioned that if the town Estos has it, the town just provided a weekly shuttle bus for those that would need it. That sounds like it's a great idea as for the current town, which, um, I don't know if there's any negative effects at the moment. I've had some fun with the mannequin, which strapped to the light post, some interesting pictures of it here and there. I've never seen anyone there and wonder what will become of it if for some reason marijuana is legalized and maybe around $4,000. Better than next time.
Jeff?
And so, I can't give too much of a bad of a basis for marijuana. I can tell you that, um, from what I've read, there are some people who can save their lives. There are little kids that have seizures, uh, over and over and over again, and marijuana is a medicine that makes it traumatic. I see most of the medical marijuana card people, they're just an excuse for drugs. Uh, they're, they're abusing it, um, they're, they're handed out like candy prescriptions. It was a mistake to not pass the moratorium. Why we have to have a medical marijuana dispensary? That, that's the big question we're likely asking. Why, why, why is it not sold and safe? If this is a medication, why wouldn't the Safeway pharmacy sell it? Why wouldn't any other pharmacy sell it? That should have been the law in Sweet Home. You can, you can sell medical marijuana at any other pharmacy, but you have, have to be a genuine pharmacy that sells drugs to people that have medical needs. If the fact is the pharmacy won't sell medical marijuana at Safeway Pharmacy, what does that tell you about its use as a medicine? Because I guarantee you, there's a way for a child who needs this to get it, okay? There's a way in our society for that to happen. And, and what these medical marijuana dispensaries are going to be is they're going to be a gateway to illegal access to drugs. Um, so when you say, you know, on Main Street, not to your children, what's wrong with selling medication to your children? What's wrong with saying, sell medication on Main Street? This isn't selling medications, it's selling drugs. It's selling drugs to people who can get cards that are easy to get because there are doctors who will write prescriptions to people who do not need them. And, you know, the law in Sweet Home should be you cannot sell medical marijuana anywhere else over you sell every other meds. People who genuinely need it, a pharmacy. If the pharmacy's going to sell it, then it'll be somewhere else.
I have a follow up. Council office?
Yes, sir.
When was the moratorium going to end?
The, as it is placed currently, it would be a one year moratorium, so that would have been 12 months. Or if, if the pleasure of the council could have been, uh, canceled earlier.
Okay, so my follow up question to that is, what was the problem with waiting for that one year? Or I believe it was in May, I could be wrong. I think that it lasted through May of next year, when the state was going to make their decision. What it was going to be, we didn't know. So, the moratorium, like, uh, Jeff says, could, what, what possible harm could that be? But we rushed right into it and put a dispensary on Main Street. And it, it makes no sense to me that we would, we would not at least wait that short period of time to, to do that. So, what, what was your reasoning behind? I mean, I, I think you tried to answer that, but you really didn't.
Okay. So, um, that, that was actually a fairly easy one for me. Um, even though I'm not familiar with my favorite votes, um, I may not always vote unless like what I like and what I feel is, is right. The people voted to put these in place, um, we didn't put that dispensary there. Uh, I think it's an interesting terminology that I could choose. I didn't put it there, nobody else on the council voted that there. People took advantage of a law that is currently on the books, the open dispensary. The reason that it's not sold in pharmacies is actually unpopular, I think, and given outside, people would stand there. Um, so as a direct thing, um, because we were not interested at that time, or did not incite it, want to put language that we were going to direct specifically for the ordinance review to where we would, would or would not place these, um, I did not feel comfortable sitting back and waiting 12 months for something that the people had already voted for.
Other question, Grant?
Just, um, I, I first of all, I've heard a lot about economic development from all of you. And just a reminder, everybody in this room is an economic development director of some sort. So, capitalize on those people also that you have. But I did hear a lot about, I heard a lot about attracting new businesses, not existing businesses. Brian used to have a saying that, it's kind of sexy not shopping in Sweet Home. What, what are you as counselors going to do to change that perception and bring that business, the local business, so that it looks like we have a thriving downtown? Because that's why I think a lot of people don't stop, is it doesn't look thriving at any given time. What are each of you willing to do towards that?
Well, the only difference I know between a place people want to spend money at versus a place they don't is availability of product. Recently, I, three months ago, I was trying to buy some product from a small shop here in town, kept a, well, back order in fact. And I ran, wow, you know, three days later, I kind of want to rub it in their face, and go, wow, you know, your three months back order, I had in three days. That, I don't know how you're going to have, business owner doesn't know what they're doing on their business. And those that keep coming for an item, but won't buy the item, short from having inflatable limbs hanging, banners that blow, and World War Two arc lights dancing around your night. I'm not really sure how, I mean, we could dress the place up like Vegas and hope that had snacks for buyers, but there's, there's nothing to purchase it, you know? Uh, you know, false one for going to Springfield, Eugene, overall.
Safety, irrespective, that's a tough one. There's, it would be nice if we could direct and make things happen, but that's not the type of form that we're looking for. At best, we can try to encourage the businesses to get on board with some of the other events and things we have going on. Uh, we have a lot of dedicated people to a lot of small events, and some are so small, I think the market definitely isn't that. But a lot of times it feels like the businesses are not interested in capitalizing on the people that are already drawn in. Once again, I don't know if that's due to burnout or a lack of communication with them in coordination, which fortunately, or fortunately, goes back to. But we're focused on the downtown area, on the recent concrete ideas, parking, you know? It's not a comfortable place, it's not. How about we take some of these empty lots that are right across from my office, that's really close to your store? But let's, let's pave it, let's build a big silence as a free public parking, free customers. Um, I, I, I drive by, I think, hey, I'm a customer. That's an idea, you know, it, it costs money, and so we have to weigh those kinds of ideas, but another one's safe. It's dangerous crossing streets in downtown Sweet Home. Uh, people are getting hit, um, people aren't paying attention, so if there's a way we can make the streets safer so people feel comfortable shopping down there, I can tell you, I'm a nervous wreck when I go like bring my children to my office. You know, it's so close to that bath street, people aren't paying attention, it makes me very, very nervous. Um, you know, how, how would make it feel more comfortable, more safe? Um, security, you know, as a store and shoplifting, that's a key problem. Um, you know, ultimately that falls on the store to deal with the security, but when they catch someone, then it turns over to the police department, it turns over to the city attorney, it turns over to the court system. Do we punish people when they commit crimes in our city? And the reality is, it's a, putting people in jail is a budget issue, you know, and, but, but it's an issue we need to deal with. Because if people think they can shoplift with a community, you know, and if they get caught, you know, the punishment is, you know, two days community service, and that, that's not a solution. That doesn't, that, that hurts our local businesses. They need to know they'll be backed up if they catch them to shoplifting in their store, which may consequence to that person. Finally, the last thing on that, um, you know, Henry Ford said, you know, if I don't pay my people enough to buy my, my cars, I'm not going to be a businessman. The people of Sweet Home got a bill to make money in order to shop in their own stores. And, you know, to the extent, a lot of people drive to Walmart because you know what they can't afford and you can't buy. So, if we can improve the economy, if we can get better jobs for people, you're going to see businesses in Sweet Home thrive. You know, you're going to see this, they're, they're going, your store sells wonderful stuff. You know, I, I like things that I'll offer in this video, right? And I think the things that we provide in our community are good things, but some people just can't find, can't afford. And so, if we can improve the economy, we can help that.
I had a small business in Sweet Home, and you learn really quick that you have to use the resources around you. When I went in, we had a, I had a lot of help from the local businesses downtown. There is a strong pull together between these businesses downtown to help each other out. I think the way to move forward on this is use the resources we have. And if we come to a roadblock, we look at other communities similar to ours, but there's no light bulbs, especially. We look at communities that are similar to ours and see where they struggle, how they got past, how they brought, you know, more people to the town, stopped to visit, to shop in our stores. And, you know, going back to a goal that we talked about, bringing people here, I think, will help towards the small businesses that are in town. And your store's beautiful on the outside, mine's not. It would be nice if we could make, like I said before, our buildings that run through town is pretty as a center and large strip through town. So, when people come to town, they don't focus on just the center and closing their eyes off to everything else. That they have to draw, want, need to stop and investigate, check things out for us. So, whether that be, we put a billboard up that says, come to Sweet Home, try us out, or whatever it may be. Something that would want to bring people here, make them want to come here and visit, and see what we have offering.
Other questions?
Hey, um, the positions that you're, uh, running, running for is, uh, obviously like the position of one of the seven member policymaking board. Each of you have talked about, uh, interesting and good topics about what you want to do and how you feel about it. But how would you address working with your, uh, fellow councilpersons? Um, if you had six that perhaps were against or didn't necessarily agree with your, your vision or the concept on either the things you talked about here or, um, anything that might come up? How would you address educating them and getting them engaged in trying to learn about your concepts?
What, responsibly smart?
Yes.
Uh, Bruce, go ahead.
Um, I, especially on the council, uh, most everybody on the council has very strong personality, and that's how we've got one area. Um, and each personality type draws a certain, you know, for me personally, I, I don't get personally offended if someone else on the council disapproves with me. As long as they're willing to hear my sideage and, uh, you know, use facts and then base that decision off of those facts. Stalking it through, we're never, almost never come to a true consensus. We may vote and agree, but we may not agree how we want to, and that's the best we can do.
Thanks.
Having all the peoples on the council allows us to debate back and forth. Very seldom, because everybody has the same virtual idea. The way to help with things, I mean, we have rules and regulations, we have public need and public want. And I can have a goal and a vision that I, I feel is outstanding and like to go forward with it. But at the end of the day, it comes out what's best for our community. You vote with that people in mind, what our community wants, or what you believe the community wants and needs, based on what we have to work with.
I think the important thing is about how you, how you will vote, how you negotiate. And one of the things I had around in school, I had a lot of persons that negotiated, I mean, I'm believing a riskful negotiation framework, okay? And the idea behind that is to focus not on the positions people are taking, but on the interests that they have that are underlying those positions, okay? Um, the great example is the, the two siblings fighting over an orange, and the parent comes in, you know, I want the orange, I want the orange. And they cut it in half and give each half the orange, okay? Simple solution, right? That seems like the, the equi, most equitable solution, okay? Comes back later, here's, here's half of an uneaten orange, and here's half of an un. Comes back later, here's, here's half of an uneaten orange, and here's half of an orange people, okay? And, and, you know, looks, looks at the kids and says, you know, who couldn't eat their orange, you know? And, um, and it turns out, you know, one of the kids wanted the orange to eat the orange, the other one wanted the peach. You know, in order to make, like, orange custard or something like that requires orange peel, okay? Uh, when you focus on the interests, instead of the position, I want the orange, you can find out that there's actually mutual gain you can have. Um, that, that's a, you know, that's a big concept, it sounds really flowered when I say it now, but it really does work. You know, when you look at advanced, you know, complex scenarios of negotiation, you say, you know what? Will the two of us actually want some of the same things, but we're taking very different positions to get there? And you know what? Even though we may disagree here, we can get this other thing, that, that makes it better for both of us. So, you know, you, you have, you have to negotiate, you have to respect people's positions, you have to, you have to listen. And, and that, I mean, that's the secret principle of negotiation, is listening to figure out what it is that they're really about. If, you know, if you just listen to the position, you're, you're missing the conversation.
Eric?
If I were facing myself in one night and come through and being told by six others that it won't happen, I believe I would go and find a support that the community have a potential meeting and say, this is, you know, if I can't do it, I'll find another pitchman to try and change the six. As we've seen with the national government, meeting halfway is, you know, two bad half ideas don't always make a good idea. If I can't do it on my own, I will see others that can assist me, if I feel it's really been important. Or maybe everyone else will also have some supporters, and then they can explain to me why I'm wrong. And it's just a matter of communication and hoping that something will happen, just as, you know, something one way or the other, as opposed to no decision whatsoever.
Okay.
I have one more, my last one. My promise. Do you think that the city council should elect a mayor or choose a mayor instead of the voters in the city?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, well, you know, it's funny because I was thinking about that today. You know, I, I have thought for how that could change going forward. And we, we already got a system where we vote equal and we tally the votes. What if we said, you know, what the person who gets the very most votes is the mayor? But that's, that'd be a very, very quick change. Um, I think ultimately, the, we, we have a council manager style of government, okay? So the mayor is in very, as powerful a position as it would be in some other cities. But that's the reason why the city council picks the mayor. But, but I think as a fingerhead for the city, it is important, you know, it, it is important to who's driving down the road and, and what they represent about the city. I think the voters should have some say in that, and, and like I said, you know, a, a, a simple solution could be just, just whoever gets the most votes in that election cycle is going to be the mayor, you know, people have chosen.
So, before, before you go on, let me, let me clarify that the selection of mayor process is set in charge. And, um, there was a move, or the charter review committee reviewed that, looked at that, and chose not to make that change. But that is how it is, it's set in charge, so it would take people of the citizens to change that to allow for, uh, the election of a governor. So, go ahead and finish answering, counsel, practice some questions if you would. Just clarifying.
Eric?
Having been in the, sorry, in council, which is, I was going to say that I had your rights, so as you pull it out, you're setting stones right now, so the next time, try to re-lead the committee to organize this, which, you know, took twenty-eight years since the last one, so grandchildren might be ready to test.
I, I haven't actually thought about this before, um, just because of the style of, for two reasons, really. Uh, one is because of the style we have, um, once again, pretty much the big purpose of being mayor is is you get to bang the gal, it gives people a lot of extra power inside our council. Um, and the other reason I've never thought about it is because of the entire time I've lived in Sweet Home, that's the way it's been. As far as changing it, I'd be curious what the people would be interested in, and I think that might be something we need to look at. I'm afraid I don't have a better answer.
I'm good with Bruce's opinion on that, it's the way it's always been, and, uh, and then if it ever comes up again where we can't put it to a vote, I think the community should have a right to decide if we want to have a vote for a mayor, or if we leave the city council, or if you do a section, both councils can weigh in, and the community can also weigh in on who they feel would be a better choice for mayor. Your good choice.
Okay, um... Bruce, I have a, a, well, I have kind of a follow-up question. Uh, if you see, the problem is, how do you see it? I think, I think this follow-up question is referred to your question, and it may be, like, a, a, or...
From my standpoint, I think it can be a popularity contest. And I believe, I'm a firm believer in letting the people decide, just like the dispensary thing. And I, I think that if, if you want to run for mayor, then you ought to put on the ballot as a councillor slash running for mayor. And if there's only one, then he's the mayor, or she's the mayor. And if there's two, then whoever gets the most votes should be the mayor. I don't think seven people should have that power, that's my personal opinion. And that's, and it has nothing to do, has nothing to do with some hidden agenda or anything. I just, I'm just thinking that it, it should be, it should be brought to the public, like probably every other city that I know of. Maybe I, I haven't rein, I haven't investigated that, like I did the water field section. But, uh, I, I, I just think that that's, I think that would be the proper way to do it. I believe it should.
Should we try and answer that? Um, yeah, if you want, go ahead, if you think you should.
I believe we should, yeah, it'd be good.
Yeah?
Absolutely, I think that's, it's, it's, you know, may not have a lot of power, but it's important to figure out this is kind of symbolic behavior of the city officials, you know, that, that, that mean. I guess, I think that would be something, it would be a reasonable change.
Eric?
Sure, why not?
Mike?
It is a procedural question, I guess. I, I think I understand like the concept, and it's not necessarily a bad concept, but at any one time, you're going to have anywhere from three to four councillors on, on the ballot. So are you choosing the ones within that, that one, or?
I guess that's, that'll be decided when they, you know, they want to change it through, I guess. That would be my, my decision. Oh, no, the charter, you're, you're, it's just a matter of, once it's reviewed, the part required, you have to do reviews and revisions. There are some things to, you know, with that choice that, that I am aware of, because there are different forms of a council, a manager, or a government. There's a strong mayor, a weak mayor, um, those types of things. So those would be other things that would be under consideration as to how many, how many may we have. For example, the city of Lebanon, the mayor only votes in the city of Lebanon and Albany, the mayor only votes in case of a tie. The mayor does not have a vote at all. In the city of Sweet Home, the mayor has a vote, just like the council. So those are these considerations that you would have to ask yourself if you chose to put that direction.
Anything further?